All right, I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education meeting in order on November 25th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kelly.
It's Betterbit.
Here.
Mr. Case Leo.
Excused.
Ms. Flynn.
Excused.
Mr. Rikowski.
Here.
Stabler.
Excused.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Skewer. Here. Mr. White.
Here.
Fire exits, Matt.
Excesses are the back of the LGI.
All right. Our first, we have a workshop tonight, and it is with Mr. John Giacometto with Athletics. And PE. I should've said NPE and Athletics.
Thank you for having me, everybody. I wanted to just take about 10 minutes of your time for our board members. I am going to be showing a free video, so if you want to position yourself when it comes to that. But we just wanted to take a step back and look at the critical skills and attributes that the board had in mind for the upcoming future. So I have a couple of things I wanted to mention here that we are doing in our department. And first, focusing in on collaboration, working with others to accomplish tasks and solve problems. And when we heard this initiative, it fitted perfectly with our Girls in Sports Day. So what we were able to do this year along with the efforts of Katie Beordy, who is a Beacon Hall of Fame member, was to focus in on our female participation rates and try to increase as much as possible. So collectively, we were able to work with all of our coaches and student athletes to put together a day where we can offer various girls' sports in one day to give them access to different things that they have to offer when they're at Ramona Middle School and Beacon High School. So we had multiple coaches and phys ed teachers throughout the district. The names are up there on the board. We were able to volunteer, and in addition, we were able to have colleges come in and college coaches along with collegiate athletes to come work with our students as well. We were able to have over 100 girls within the Beacon School District come participate on that day. We were actually able to have Kim Hampton, who's a former WNBA All-Star, come do a motivational speech for the young ladies at lunchtime. So I have a quick five-minute video just to show the day if you want to take a look.
So the idea for Girls in Sports Day came from a conversation that I had with a friend who teaches at Putnam Valley. She's a retired teacher from Putnam Valley High School, and they do a Girls in Sports Day. And I loved the idea when I heard it. I thought it was awesome to have a whole day just dedicated to female athletes and with the message being that competitive sports can have a really big impact on your life. We wanted this day to kind of stand out, different than some of the other things that we've been doing, and really put an emphasis on, you know, building relationships with local colleges and having our girls know that they can have some role models to look up to and things like that. So most of the college coaches brought anywhere between five players to their whole team, and they kind of assessed the skill level. We had three groups. We had two elementary groups and one middle school group that rotated around to all the sports.
Ready, step, toss, kick.
A lot of them were having a great time because the coaches really brought some fun, really exciting drills and activities that really engaged the kids. The purpose of all the little sessions was to expose them to the sport, to teach them some basic fundamentals, but also to get them to like fall in love with it for a little piece and really have a good time interacting with the student athletes and the coaches. So we had in the morning, we had three stations. We had softball, soccer, and volleyball. And then in the afternoon, we had basketball, lacrosse, and swimming. And we did 40 minutes of each, so three groups, 100 kids in total. They rotated around and everybody got a taste of everything. So soccer and softball, we're able to utilize our new turf. Both of those groups brought a large portion of their team. So in those two stations, our girls really got a lot of one-on-one attention from the student athletes. Lacrosse was also on the turf in the afternoon, and Trish Malfetta from Peace University came with a bunch of her girls, and they ran a really fun lacrosse session. Jackie Goldstein from Wuch Volleyball Club came in and ran great sessions. And then in the afternoon, we had Manhattanville Girls Basketball. And then in the pool, we had an Alstair Mary Swimming Club, and they were able to get in the water. And the kids were definitely excited to go swimming after a long, hot day on the turf. So we were really excited to have Kim Hampton from the WNBA. She's a retired New York Liberty player come to speak to our girls. She is just an amazing person, and she gave our girls a really great message.
You guys have to know that when you start out learning something, it is a process. It truly is. So you can't give up on yourselves just because you're not really good at it when you first start. And it is so important that you know that, and that's with academics, that's with any other art form, that's with anything that you set out to do. You gotta give yourselves a fair chance to really work at getting good at something. Sports and athletics is what? That's right. Sports and athletics can take you places. It can teach you things, more things about yourself than almost anything. There's not a day that goes by that I don't use one of the lessons that I've learned, lessons like mental toughness. Guess what? I might give my best today, and my best might not be good enough, and I still lose. That happens. It's life. Each one of us has our own DNA. We have our own fingerprint. No one was meant and created to be like you. You might have a twin, or someone might look like you, but they'll never ever be you. So that means they can't do what you were sent here to do. So all of your gifts and talents, and we were all blessed with gifts and talents, all of your gifts and talents, you have to work on them. It could be academics, athletics, art. It could be whatever. It could be being a wonderful human being, making the world a better place, whatever it is. Use your skills, girls. Use your skills.
I think it was successful for sure. We were able to get 100 girls to participate and walking around throughout the day. All the girls seemed like they were having fun, so in my eyes, it was a success. I had a great time. It didn't feel like work. It felt like, you know, we were all here doing something special. The team of teachers that came to help on that day were absolutely amazing. We had a committee of teachers that John and I got together when we first had this idea, and they've been working really hard and putting it together. Caitlin Morrison, Diane Tansey, Brianna Tobin, Mike Carafano, Marissa Benson, TJ Zaner, our rock stars. And they were on the field, in the court, in the pool with the kids all day. And all their efforts really is what made this day a success.
So as you can see, it was a really special day that we had. It's very creative. Probably the best compliment was we had multiple people asking us when we were going to be doing our next one. So it's definitely something we want to look to continue, but I just wanted to be able to share that with you because, as you can tell, it's also a way to collaborate. Moving on from there, taking a look at Beacon's most critical attributes, just a quick focus on citizenship and community. Understand that all members are part of the larger whole. And I think having the turf facility given us the ability to have these contests at night, we were able to have overwhelmingly a high amount of people attend our night contests. As you can see, here's all of our fall athletes at a game. And I did want to share with you, if you take a look at this picture, I know it's a little blurry. This is actually the first football game I've ever worked at Beacon in September 2017. So this is a varsity football game. If you take a look, there is a very low amount of people in attendance at this game compared to the next picture, which is actually the first varsity football game that we were able to have this year under the lights on the turf field. So when it comes down to having the community engage within the school district, I think this is a great way to get it started. We're able to provide our kids things to do on Friday nights, provide the community, you know, something to do and something positive to come out to watch, support between our homecomings and having a nice fireworks show donated to us as well. It's been a very special fall. With that, we were able to raise our participation from marching into parades. We were able to have five of our athletic teams march in the spirit of Beacon Day Parade. And in addition, during the contests we've been having on the field, we've been inviting youth organizations to be recognized. For instance, there's the Beacon Bears Youth Football and Cheerleading Program. We were able to bring out and give them a special treat and honor them halftime during one of our football games. So a couple accomplishments we were able to make so far this year. One was to focus on empathy for all the phys ed teachers. In short, basically, one of our goals was trying to get to know our students better. One of the initiatives that Matt Van Boris and Brianna Tobin have been giving them is, for example, trying to know something about a student that you know nothing about every day. So you're gonna have your students who are very ambitious and are constantly interacting with you, but you're also gonna have students that may not be as interactive as those others. And trying to get to know them or know something about them should be a goal for each of our teachers. That's just an example that we've been using for a couple of people. Our Walk to School Day, we had all four of our elementary schools and middle schools participate in our Walk to School Day, which was great this year. We now have PE student of the month at all four of our elementary schools and at Ramona Middle School. All schools are now on social media, including RMS. Stay tuned for Beacon High School. And we've been having great results with the elective-based PE classes, basically giving more opportunities for our students to try some different things. We're at the point with Beacon High School where we're going to be looking at more field trip opportunities to do some nice things within the local areas. And then a few goals that we have. We're going to continue our relationship with the Elks Club Wuchu. That's going to be on Friday, December 6th at Ramona Middle School. Basically, it's a free throw contest, but it's not just set aside for basketball players. It's meant for all students to be able to come out and participate in our scholarship opportunities provided with that. Something that we're extremely excited to start, which also addresses the equity goal that the board made, was having a unified basketball team. Unified basketball is basically a basketball league within Section 1, which provides actual games for our students with disabilities at Beacon High School. And it is a legitimate team. There will be practices. We will have competitions against other schools within the school district, Hendrick Hudson, Lakeland, maybe a couple of them. So and the point of the program is to provide these students with an actual game plan experience. You promote the event. You invite all of the other teams that are going on and students to come to the event. You do a halftime recognition. You do your senior night. So these students will get the same opportunity that all of the other students at Beacon High School have been able to have. Very excited to get this started. We've received nothing but positive things about it. Our Family Fitness Fun Night, we're gonna do it a little bit different this year. I want it, we're gonna be hosting it from the Beacon City School District Phys Ed Department. And basically, we are going to be having our phys ed teachers lead activities for not only the students, but with the parents, depending on the age levels. And we're also addressing the communication goals that the board had by inviting the local community vendors to come into the school to be able to showcase what they can offer to the students in our community. So we're excited about that. That will be at a date later in July, I believe it's, excuse me, January. I believe it's January 17th, but you'll see some promotion on social media with that as well. And finally, our Hall of Fame induction ceremony will be on December 6th at 5:45 PM. Eight former student athletes and a coach will be inducted into the Beacon High School Hall of Fame. One of our board members is very lucky to have his daughter being inducted this year. Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
I can make it. So that's good.
Yep, absolutely. But, you know, ultimately, I just wanted to share some brief things that we were doing this year to, you know, meet what the board was asking us to do. And as I mentioned before, it's been a very positive fall. But that's it for my presentation. Do you have any questions? Yes.
So the girls' program was focused with the Ramona Middle School girls?
Elementary level, basically fourth and sixth grade was our primary focus for the transition into modified sports.
Okay. Is there any thinking about other, like, older kids, like doing other, you know, expanding the program for trying to capture other, not capture, but get other kids?
It certainly is. And I think if we're starting younger, now we can start to expand to an older age because now we'll be able to transition a little bit easier with it.
Right.
You know, we are hurting on girls' participation, something that we need to improve upon. And as I mentioned, having 100 girls in a day to experience all these different things, I think that's a great start. Having Katie Beordy, who's, you know, a graduate of Beacon, a Beacon Hall of Fame athlete herself, kind of leading the way, taking the charge, I think that's such a powerful first to be able to, you know, be hands-off with our students.
Yeah, it's impressive. Thank you.
How's it going with the partnering? I think there's two programs that you were trying to partner with other districts, and they were partnering with Beacon as well, where students were getting to participate in sports in other districts that we aren't offering?
So you can merge with other school districts depending on the different sports that are available. It can be a little bit difficult depending on some of your more prominent sports. For instance, if a baseball team wanted to merge with Beacon, and we allowed it, but we had five athletes from another school district coming and taking five starting positions from Beacon athletes, it just becomes a little bit more of a process than before. But there are some different sports that we are exploring to look at, a crew being one of them, being so close to the river. But it's kind of an ongoing conversation. You know, we need to be on board. Any other school district needs to be on board to be able to accept us as well. But it's definitely something that we're keeping our ears open to and we're exploring.
But I think you also, like, in the past, we tried to partner and allow that piece. I know something came to the board. I think you're asking, did that go through or did that happen?
Yeah. Well, I knew that the crew was sort of, I wasn't sure where that was.
Well, that, and then we had another school district that we were planning on doing it, and then at the last minute, the other school district put the hole on merging with us.
Okay.
There's a little bit more to it, but we're not opposed to doing that. It's definitely, you know, the more opportunities we can offer our students, the better. You know, Matt and I have had multiple conversations about doing that and offering some different things that our students haven't been able to do. So it's definitely something that we're continuing to explore, and he continues to talk to me about doing more as well.
I would really like to see a crew that, I mean, we're right on the river, and the subways has hardly ever come up until fairly recently, so keep talking. Are there other options there?
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's putting it out to the different school districts that we'd be willing to send our athletes. Crew in particular is a little bit tricky because it's mostly a club within other districts that require that the students attend. So the payment per student is looking at about $500 to $1,000, depending on how long they're involved in that season, among some other expenses. So it's not making an excuse, but, you know, there's some variables to it, but we're certainly talking with other places to see if we can get involved in it.
Obviously, you need a place where you keep the shelves, too.
Yes, sir.
That, I mean, that location is up in Poughkeepsie, where all the other teams are, so. So there are, we did a tour of it last spring, and it's certainly really interesting. There's just, along with what John pointed out about the club part of it, there's just some logistical issues, too, that make it a little challenging, but we're gonna keep looking at it.
And how are participation rates in general? Do you have a sense?
Fairly steady. Actually, we had a little bit of a spike in our RC sports. I think the turf was going to have a lot to do with that. But compared to the numbers, granted, I only have the fall. It's looking consistent to how it was last year. There's a little bit of an increase in areas, but we can certainly do better about getting more students to participate. My hope is that after seeing all the positive things that we were able to do this fall outside and how fun that was, I'm hoping that people want to be a part of that, and they want to join athletics and do things like. Funny, I have a young lady who joined one of our RC teams just this year. She was a senior, hasn't played a sport before, did great. She wanted the poster. She wanted to be something. If that's what we have to do, any more participating, it's worth it to me.
The Girls in Sports Day looked awesome.
Thank you.
How is PE options comparing the different elementary schools, the elementary schools that we have? I know not all elementary schools are built the same. They don't have the whole same space. Can you comment on that?
You know, so one of our focuses, obviously, is different spaces, different equipment. Everybody's a little bit different. But in the past three years, my goal has been able to focus in on a similar concept, so racket activities. So while one school may be doing pickleball, the other school may be doing badminton. Having the same concepts of the sport, the same types of movements, but depending on equipment, room, availability, it will vary. But it's certainly something to try to unify what our elementary schools are doing to provide those same type of skill sets to our students. But that's an example of how we're trying to do the same type of concepts, even though we may not have the same equipment and room.
So it's still a work in progress?
Correct.
So will you need, I mean, I guess it's a different, wouldn't be a different workshop, but I guess capital improvements and stuff. Would you need any of that assistance, or you need time to think about that?
Certainly. I mean, I want our phys ed teachers to be advocates for what they want to do. I think the collaboration and them working together and deciding what the best thing for our students is, I think that should happen first. And I challenge them to do that. When we have our workshops and our superintendent conference days, I want them to bring to the table the thing that's working for them the best. They should be able to have that discussion and, you know, even the light, I don't want to say argument, but disagreement about what they think is best for their students at what time, because ultimately, it's going to help us out the most. So I'm very big about them being passionate about the different subject levels, the different content levels, and sharing it with the other people.
And so I was on the crew team for seven months in college. I was there back then. So I would like also to see a crew team, maybe even just a trailer, the boats to a one or something. You know, there's a four-man crew boat. Maybe it's just even a small.
Awesome. One thing we are looking to do for high school phys ed was getting the kayaks back into the pool. It's not the same, but at least we're trying some different things and offering some different things.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual.
Motion, second.
Come up to questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Expect to return in about 20 minutes. So reviewing the agenda, we don't have any items to add or edit or adjust.
There's just those changes. There were the changes highlighted on the inspection.
Is that in the copies in the scoreboard docs? Okay. So do we have any student or school presentations? Seeing none going to parent groups? Seeing no parent groups, we're gonna go open to the public? I was hoping that I stuffed you so much that you couldn't speak then. No, I'm joking.
Dennis Pavlak, Beacon, I haven't been here in a while, but I still hear things because I'm out and out. I'll go with my number one comment. What are we doing about a marching band here? I know we had some mothers. Maybe I got that wrong a couple of years ago. Try to, wanted to start a marching band. Who's that?
Bam.
It's Bam.
Bam. Beacon Advocates for Music.
So anyway, will you finish? Arlington just got one of their fourth state championships in Syracuse, marching band, and we need to be there. We need to be at that level, or we need to get there soon with the marching band. Because for Beacon, or the Beacon, I should be on top. And just another thought, keep that in mind. Sandy Hook Promise, the group up there that formed, that formed the group, Sandy Hook Promise, has got a new video out. I saw it. I saw it on numerous times on the TV, how they, they're showing it, about it. It's showing the students are rendering how to put tourniquets on, students, other students, stop the bleeding before first responders get there. You know, it takes a little while for them to get there, get in the building, assess the situation, what's going on and how it's going on, what's going on. So please look at that video. It's very informative, very informational, and it, students do a good job with what they're doing there with the video. I brought up, I'm gonna bring this up again. I want to find out about what's going on with the fighting in our school here. We're having too much fighting in the school. We've got to know why they're fighting. Not just, hey, you go to detention, you go to timeout, you go over here. We've got to find out why they're fighting. What's the reasons to fight, fight one another? They got enough energy, enough energy to carry a tuba for the marching band. Give it to them. I'm not saying we're not, we're not doing our due diligence with, to try to keep the students from fighting with one another. What I'm trying to say is, we need to narrow down the reasons why they're fighting each other, wanting to fight each other. And if we're, and if we're the school district that's on top, we need to be on top with all our levels we have going on, whether it be student sports, student academics. But we're, we got that, we're getting that label, well, there's fighting. They're fighting each other over there with massive fights. What? We've got to find out why they're fighting one another. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments? All right, we're gonna move to superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick updates. We, for the board goal workshops, we moved sustainability to the next workshop, and which will be December 9th. And we will also do quick updates about the fiscal goal, which would be when we'll have the budget calendar for the second half of the year, and we'll update on our communication goal as well. And just an update from the committee, or one of the committees that, one of the many committees I'm on, but the committee I'm facilitating is the Diversity and Equity Committee met on, last week on Thursday night. And our next meeting is Thursday, December 19th. And at this last meeting, it was more of a working group. And, and we kind of divided into three working groups. This is with staff and with community members who come. One is about hiring diverse staff. Another was about the code of conduct and how it relates to some of the things we're doing, like restorative practices and responsive classroom. Then the last group was about creating more inclusive environment for students with disabilities. So we made a lot of good progress in the first sort of working meeting, and we're looking forward to having all the stuff that comes from that feed into our strategic planning. And just a couple of other things, based on the public comment. We do have a new band teacher this year at the high school. You have to grow the program a little bit before you do full marching. That is one of his goals. He's already this year, just in the first couple of months of being here. We've seen some growth in the program, and we're very excited about what he's bringing, including, one of his first steps is having a pep band at all of our Friday Night Lights games, which is very new for us to have that. And so he's doing a great job, and that's one of his goals. I haven't seen the video for the Sandy Hook Promise, but we did do what we call Stop the Bleed trainings. We did it for all of our staff at all of our schools. We have not talked about doing it with students yet, so that will be something, I think if we did do it, it would be optional, if we did do it, but we certainly worked to have all of our staffs trained. And I totally agree with the comment that we always need to be looking for the reasons behind why things happen with our students. And we spend a lot of time doing that. We will continue to do that as well. So thank you for your comments.
All right. Moving to committee reports, including board comments. We're gonna start with Grace.
Oh, that's right over here. Hi, everyone. Just wanted to say Mr. Giacometto had a great presentation before. Throughout my high school, I had three athletic directors, so, and being a full-time varsity athlete since freshman year, it's definitely shift between everything, like three different styles, and he's definitely at the top by way far. Mr. Giacometto travels to every single sectional game, is always on Twitter, representing everyone and encouraging everything. I think it's great. And about the Girls in Sports Day, I wish I had lived something, I wish I had something like that when I was younger. It was one of my parents that kept me motivated to play sports my whole life, and my siblings and my friends. My class is a good class if you have people involved, but throughout the rest of the high school, we really don't. And I'm all for adding new sports and stuff like that, but I don't think, like, we actually realize how many kids come to stuff like that. Like, for varsity basketball, you would think, wow, like, I want to be on top, make the team. We had like 15 girls, I think, on like a 12-band roster, so it's kind of just sad to not set up participation. But hopefully, like, Girls in Sports Day, that will definitely facilitate more people coming. And when they do come, they kind of forget the commitment. Like, basketball started probably three weeks ago. We've already had four morning practices at 5:30 in the morning, then full day school. So it's a commitment, but I love sports, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Any questions for Grace?
Thank you.
All set? All right, we're gonna start with the, hold on, can I ask, when's your first home basketball game?
Tuesday, December 3rd.
Sorry, flip. No, that's good. All right, we're gonna start with, let me start with Craig with the, I'm sorry. All right, we're gonna start with, let me start with Craig with the, I'm sorry. We have public relations advocacy legislative end committee.
There's a number of things cooking that we should be alert to. We're looking at the report from the state government. The administration had a potential six billion dollar deficit in the state budget for the coming year, which theoretically begins in April one. So that would be really bad news in general, but also for the question of state aid to schools, which is critical importance to us. If the state budget comes under a lot of pressure because of this deficit materializing, we are probably gonna face more of an uphill fight than usual. The worst that could happen is if somebody tries to cut state aid, even though everything says they ought to be increasing it. And everybody who's advocating on this on behalf of schools will probably come up with some kind of posture saying how much we would like to see it increase. So we're kind of fighting uphill again. This reminds me of what happened after the big recession kicked in and Governor Cuomo came in and said we need to do a lot of cutting. What seems to be the big issue currently is Medicaid expenses. The, this is not Medicare, it's Medicaid. Medicaid, it does involve the state share of the payments. It's a really astonishing statistic as to what percentage of New York state residents get Medicaid. I, I'll tell you what I read. I'm still gaiety at this and can't believe it's true, but it's like, I think about a third. And so it's like six, six million people or something like that. It's really mind-boggling, but I'd like to look further into it and see what's really dragging that. So we face some challenges in going forward. Another thing that is up for discussion is whether or not the tax rebate would be renewed. That was a program that ran for a few years and the last check, for those of you who are homeowners, probably got a check, which covers theoretically, according to the zeitgeist behind this, is it supposed to help you pay your school taxes, which is why it comes out just before your school taxes due. It also happens to be, by a strange coincidence, just before elections. And some of us think that it has more to do with one than the other. The situation is that, again, the state budget under stress, they may not renew it. Some seem to favor it and some seem to oppose it, and many seem to be a little bit vague on it at this point. As is often the case in the early going on the budget. So one of the implications of that is that if the tax rebate check disappears, it becomes a change in the formula for those who are looking at the possibility of doing a budget that would exceed the nominal two percent tax cap. Fortunately, we have not encountered a situation where we needed to give any serious thought to that. We've been able to make some improvements thanks to tax-based growth and growth in the state aid and good financial management and not too many things going wrong at once. So if you recall, the, in order to be able to get those checks, the school district has to stay within the tax cap limitation, or else you don't get your checks. So that's kind of a, in my opinion, if I may express a personal opinion, sort of a case of bribery, since we're throwing that word around in the national debates these days. I think it applies in the state debate as well, is that the politicians are essentially bribing you to not go beyond the two percent tax cap. Well, you know, if the voters want to do that, they can do it. They shouldn't be bribed one way or the other, in my opinion. So it'll be interesting to see how this shakes out. If it were me in the legislature, I would say, let it slide. Let's not do it again. Let's let it go away. And the other good thing that I've made before, I think, is if it's a rebate, how come you didn't give me the money in the first place? You know, if this is a rebate of money that I've already paid, why did you take it if you didn't need it? So those are my thoughts on what's coming up in the state budget. Beyond that, I'd like to say I enjoyed seeing the, the school play for the high school, making players, Rock of Ages. Had a good time seeing that. And I noticed that we have an arts and education coordinator position that is vacant again because the teacher is not gonna be there, who held that slight band spot. So I assumed that we're looking for somebody else to pick that up. Oh, I forgot, there's one other legislative thing that came through of note. We did have some discussions a couple of years ago about the school bus stop arm camera issue. That has been signed into law by the governor after a couple of years of debate and research and so on. We didn't do anything, we didn't take a position on that, but we did look at it, had some talk. And I think that now that it's law, it becomes a real possibility that we could do that. I do know that when we raised the issue to Mr. Mackey, our transportation director, he said it's not a simple thing, it's kind of complicated. And I would suggest that, given that this has come back on the table, that perhaps we should have a discussion maybe in facilities and operation about, and maybe visit with Mr. Mackey maybe once a year to see how things are in that department and raise the question, is this something that we might wanna consider? And by the same token, since it inextricably involves your local police departments, we probably would want our security director to be advised of this as well, perhaps to chime in on the conversation. Those are my thoughts for today.
Thank you.
Just briefly about the last item. I don't think they formally announced it, so I'll let them do it, but Duchess County is going to be providing leadership for the whole county with the stop arm cameras, the county executive's office. So for each district in Duchess to do it themselves would be really complicated because we have a lot of different jurisdictions we're dealing with.
Sure.
Even in Beacon, so they're gonna provide leadership in trying to find a way forward with it. So I think that's great, so.
Any questions for Craig? Alice, do you want to give an update on policy?
Sure. In James's absence, I can tell you that we are meeting, the policy committee will meet on Monday, December second, at seven PM in the district office. We'll be reviewing seven policies on Monday night. I also went to see Rock of Ages. It was awesome. I don't know if every high school puts on such a great production. My high school certainly, the sets never looked as good as the Rock of Ages set looked, so it was great. And a question based on Mr. Pavlok's comment, do we have a higher than average amount of fighting in our schools? I don't, I never hear about a lot of fights. Is that something that is an issue? Just wondering where he.
I mean, it's no, no higher than any sort of average level.
Good. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions for Alice?
I do. There was a, we had a policy come around for the use of, you know, portable devices. Did we, did that get approved or is it pending?
I think it was brought up at.
Was it a new business item?
It's, we talked about whether or not to, that it would go on their roster. I think it's, it's on the, I think it made it to their list, but it hasn't been made into a policy.
I don't think we, the policy hasn't been written, I don't believe, but it's.
Okay, so it's on your list to start.
It's on our list to review.
For discussion, yeah.
I wasn't sure where we, where we landed with that one, because we can see a draft, so, or a proposal or something.
Yeah.
I don't think we saw a draft.
It was just, it was just like an example.
Example, yes, example.
And there's nine policies up for a second read tonight.
Right.
I just wanted to add something. Sorry. I know this comment might have like made Beacon High School out to be like a fighting zone, but it's not. I never feel unsafe in school. I think it's a great environment.
Good. I'm glad to hear you say that. Yeah, cause I, I mean, I have a kid in high school and I don't hear about a lot of fights, so I just wonder.
No, yeah.
Where it's coming from. Thanks.
Mike?
First of all, first go over facilities, since Kristen is not here. So we met on the, was it on the thirteenth of November? Some of the discussions were one we were reviewing, we have a RFP out for architectural services and engineering services. And we wound up reissuing, right, re-requesting. And we have also posted that request, right, on our website. So those are, the updated RFPs are due.
I know we're having a walk.
There was supposed to be a walk down tomorrow, was that still planned?
Yes.
Jeez, I can't find it now. And then they are due, give me a second. I can't find it, what they're exactly due. Please take a look. So then we'll get, then we'll be reviewing them again, and then we have a date in there when we're proposing to bring them to the full board for, for a review and a recommendation approval. As far as the capital project update, we're still working on punch list items. Moving along, they've been working nights and weekends and holidays in order to finish a lot of the punch list items. And the ventilators, all, I mean, all the schools obviously have heat, so that's not the issue. So it's really finishing out the rest of that project. We talked about potentially funding or starting up, putting on the ballot a capital insurance reserve in the upcoming ballot for, that we would use to be able to collect, you can explain it better. We're looking for an insurance, funding an insurance reserve for capital expenses. You know, to capture things like we had to deal with the, not the fail, but the mold and the HVAC issues last year. So that would be something that we will be discussing, I guess, during the budget season, whether it goes on the ballot or not. So heads up on that. And that's really about it.
One more thing, Alice, the capital reserve.
That's what we were just talking about, the capital reserve.
That was, I thought that you said for the insurance reserve for the.
That's on the agenda tonight, or is that different?
No, the, no, the agenda tonight was, I think.
The insurance, well, that's on the agenda tonight, it's just the use of the insurance reserve that we set up in June. I think, Mike, you're speaking about an insurance reserve in the future, but Anthony, we had talked about doing a bigger capital reserve. That might have to be on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
So this is a couple of different things.
So I'm sorry, I thought it was not clear. So for the ballot, we may be looking at a larger capital reserve. So as we look at, if we need, you know, larger capital expenditures and projects in the future, we will be kind of saving ahead of time for that, which would then require a less of a bond, right?
Correct. And the RFPs are due Friday, December fifteenth.
And then we'll have, I think our next meeting is actually on the eleventh, so we may need to look at that if we wanna get together as a facility community to review that, or to get the recommendation from the, from the staff. Other than that, I was really excited to hear about the women in sports, things, it's very important. And starting at the younger ages, it's really a great idea, trying to get more and more participation. And in the high school, for the, you know, men and women, boys and girls, to increase participation. Hopefully, you know, the turf field and the Friday, Friday, you know, community events, and we'll, we'll do that. Cause that's really a huge benefit for the community, so I was happy to see that presentation. That's it for me.
Just a comment, according to my seventh grader, thirty-two girls tried out for modified basketball. I don't know if it's true or not, but that seems like a lot.
That's great.
Fine with that as well. Any questions for Mike? Anthony?
Do you mean, thank you for the, thank you, John, for the workshop on PE and athletics. And I look forward to seeing how, how, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the presentation was geared towards the high school and middle school sports teams, and there was some PE in there, but I am, I look forward to see, you know, whether improvements are needed at the elementary school level on that, as I, as I mentioned to him. The, I did see Rock of Ages, I did, and it was, it was pretty cool. It was, it was, I think the Beacon players did a great job. And I would concur with Matt that a lot of the old songs did create flashbacks, I guess. So, and, you know, and it's interesting because the narrator, you know, eloquently said that a lot of these songs were made before they were born. So, but they, but they, they performed them very well. So I, I unfortunately missed the diversity committee meeting, so I do regret that. I was in Litchman, the Maritime Conference Center in Lynticum Heights, Maryland. That was, that was later in the week after the board meeting. So while I was there, the Association for School Business Officials were having a conference, so I couldn't help myself. And I mingled over there to see what was going on. And I, I met this vendor, Keenan Pharmacy, who actually does business with the capital region policies on saving money with the pharmacy services and stuff. I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell, I'm not gonna do them any sort of injustice in what they try to sell me, but, but I'll pass that information on to Andrew Ray. And I will have to miss the policy committee meeting coming up on the second. I don't know if the board wants to set an alternate to replace me for that day or something, but I will be in Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Bill, can you update us on wellness, since Flora's not here?
Yeah, sure. So we, Flora came over to my office a couple of days ago to set the agenda for the upcoming meeting. You know, it was, you know, just as she spoke last, last time, we reviewed some of the action items that, that were presented at the last meeting. Nothing really new has come up. We might have, you know, presenter in the be, in the beginning of, of the next meeting, and the meeting is set for, I believe, December fourth. So that's pretty much what I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Did you wanna report on diversity?
I, I did a quick one during that same time.
I didn't, okay, I didn't more.
No, my sequential line there categorized.
Meredith?
I was able to attend the district safety committee meeting last week. And Mark Thomas reported on just fine tuning the plans at every school for various events that we hope will not happen. But they are, they are prepared and continue to fine tune that preparation. They also discussed trainings for the members of the safety committee and trainings at the district office, a building that really hasn't had any trainings. And also the threat assessment teams, which have been formed, but they're waiting for state guidelines to, to pursue that further. Our next curriculum committee meeting is on December eleventh. And the next Duchess County School Board Association meeting is on the fifth.
I have no comments versus Stephen.
All right.
Moving right along, going to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda to commit supportive education may more affect the use of its time by adopting a similar motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that that item will be considered and voted on separately. Thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. If there are anything on a consent agenda, a board member would like bold.
Yes, ten point oh seven.
Hearing no other items.
Ten on mine.
Hearing no other items, I need a motion to approve ten point oh one through ten point twenty minus ten point oh seven and ten point oh nine.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? I'd like to say, well, thanks for ten point oh eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six oh. Any motion for ten point oh seven?
Motion to approve ten point oh seven, approve district treasurer's reports.
Second. Comments or questions?
Question I have is on page five of the treasurer report. Looks like it talks about outstanding bank reconciliation, checklist-ing outstanding checks. So, some of these date back to early 2018. So, two questions. One, I mean, do we, how long do we keep these open for, or is there no expiration on any of these?
The general consensus from the auditors is by the end of the school year, we should try to close them out. So, as you notice, if you look on them, a lot of them are two people, so we hate to void it out, so we have a process of contacting them, maybe they lost their check. So, and then we also had a change in treasury this year too, so we may have held on to things that were a little bit older, but going forward, we'll be a little bit more diligent about not keeping things older.
And that's understandable, I just wanted to see if there was a kind of sunset on those, about a year.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the second question is, at the bottom of that page, there is written in additional, there's a New York State tax line, federal tax, and ERS.
So, the month end was August thirty-first, which was a Saturday, and we had a payroll on August thirtieth, so those, you have to call the taxes in the day of payroll, and it was at the end, but did not clear the bank, so they were considered outstanding checks, there were outstanding ACH transfers...
Oh, okay.
That were done for taxes. New York State tax, federal tax, ERS is the employee's retirement system payment.
So, these are all based on payroll?
On August thirtieth payroll, yes.
August thirtieth payroll, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six oh. Need a motion for ten point oh nine?
So moved.
Second.
Some questions is, could we have a little discussion about this? I know you've had talk before about the environmental conditions in the high school system, and I thought perhaps it should be discussed as to exactly what we're doing or plan to do.
So, at, at the end of June thirtieth, we did create, or we, I'm sorry, we refunded the insurance reserve for about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We're asking the board to transfer seventy-five thousand from the insurance reserve to pay. We're having some work done on the HVAC system, which you had talked about previously in facilities and operations, but there are some design issues here, which could have caused some of the environmental air quality issues that we had a year ago this summer. So, this is a payment and part of the contract. We still have the rest of the money left to give us a more long-term, but this was the contract that we had signed with Train to do some immediate work, to try to minimize anything.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six oh. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six oh.
At eight fourteen.